Gosh, our last Bible study on 1 Corinthians, can you believe it? It is 1 Corinthians 16, and I know some of you have gone ahead and read it, and you're probably like, "Oh, my gosh," after two or three chapters that were really, really heavy. Now, we're all of a sudden getting, you know, these chapters that are, or excuse me, we're getting this chapter that kind of isn't. But I think as we've found, as we've gone through this, we unpack the scriptures, we find that, you know, it's a lot more weighty than, you know, than we thought. And I think we're going to find this here, too, that this, that this way of of going through systematically the scripture, it's going to be much, much more meaty than we hoped. And I'm pulling up for us here our readings in both the Message and in both the New Revised Standard Version. So let's begin with prayer, the Lord be with you.
With you.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for the gift of your holy word. We thank you for St. Paul's letters of so many, two millennia old, and yet they still speak to us. They still instruct us as to ways that we might walk in love in the world. Our deepest desire, Lord, is for us to be a people of love, is for us to channel the love that you have put into the world, that we would be able to help bring a little more hope, a little more happiness, a little bit more joy into this broken place. So, Lord, we ask that you would send your Spirit to watch over us, to be with us, to inspire us, to open our hearts to new ways of thinking and being. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen. Amen. And I think it's always important to, you know, to say that we undertake this journey because we want to grow, because we want to see the world grow, and we want to see the world grow in some pretty important ways. I always like to say that a year from now, I want to be more loving. I want to be more kind. I want to be more forgiving. I want to be more generous. And times like this are, I think, little increments in getting that way. So I thank you for joining us on this journey as we look at 1 Corinthians 16. Again, we are using two versions, the New Revised Standard Version and the Message. We've been through 15 chapters with Paul in this first letter. And remember, the last couple of weeks, you guys, we talked about tongues, right? And the interpretation. We talked about the place of women in the assembly. And we've seen where Paul is trying to do his very best to help a new budding congregation move the ball forward. How big do you think this church was? Who's going to guess? How many people are we talking about?
Fifty.
I think fifty on a very good day.
Brother next door neighbors.
I was going for twenty.
Yeah, I think that's probably more like it, Susan. They estimate that these early congregations were quite small. And where are you going to meet? I mean, the first church buildings didn't come around until about the second, third century. So there was no building for this. The government wasn't about to give you a city hall. When they did, in fact, meet in government buildings, the biggest hall that was able to accommodate a number of people, do you know what the name of that architecture is? This ancient building, public building, that would be used to house churchmen, was called a basilica. And so now, of course, we only, in our mind, equate basilicas with church buildings. But early on, that was not the case. So let's jump right into it. I'm going to share my screen here with you all. And we'll take a look at 1 Corinthians 16. I'm going to see what happens when I hit my Mercury rocket ship and get rid of these ads. There we go. And so, Chapter 16, verse 1, the first four verses. Pat, would you read those for us, please?
Now, concerning the collection for the saints, you should follow the directions I gave to the churches of Galatia. On the first day of every week, each of you is to put aside and save whatever extra you earn, so that collections need not be taken when I come. And when I arrive, I will send any whom you approve with letters to take your gift to Jerusalem. If it seems advisable that I should go also, they will accompany me.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Paul's talking about a collection at church? Oh, my gosh. What I can't believe is he waits till the very last chapter to mention it. He's going to be the first thing, send in your love offering, right? I'm going to send this back here to go to Chapter 15, because 15, as you know, we talked about the resurrection of the dead, the resurrection of the body. We had a deep theological conversation last time because we were talking all about what does resurrection mean? What do we mean when we come back? Do we come back like this? Do we come back in a new body? And then in 14, of course, we were talking about tongues and prophecy. And that, of course, led then into orderly worship, women in worship, et cetera. And so we've got some pretty heavy chapters. And then he takes us up to 16. And the next thing, before you know it, what is he interested in? He's interested in talking about passing the plate. Okay? So he goes from the deep theological to the highly practical. And it's very interesting because sometimes when you talk to people or you read about them, don't they say Einstein? You know, the guy could barely brush his hair or put on clean clothes because his mind was so up in the air and lofty. And we don't get that from St. Paul. We get an ability to talk about both the deep theological truth as well as something as practical as the collection. And I wonder, Pat, if you could turn to Galatians 2:10. Kitty, do you have a Bible near you?
Yes.
Romans 15:25. Kathy, do you have one near you?
I do. Let me grab it.
Okay, you're going to go to Acts 24.
Acts 24.
Acts 24, yeah. So we've got Pat in Galatians 2. We've got Kitty in Romans 15. We've got Kathy in the book of Acts, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John, Acts. And then Chapter 17. And then Kitty, you know, you're going to be, I want to say, 1 Corinthians, 2 Corinthians, Romans. So you're going to be right next door to where you need to be. So Pat, Galatians 2:10. All of these, you probably noted, are Pauline epistles. So these are all letters from Paul. Galatians, Chapter 2, verse 10. Pat, Romans 15:25. And Acts 24:17 for Kathy. And Susan, you're off the hook. You get to just pet dogs. So you're good to go.
Actually, they're good. They're good.
They're good today, not running you crazy. Okay, Pat, what do you have in terms of Galatians, Chapter 2, verse 10?
They asked only one thing, that we remember the poor, which was actually what I was eager to do.
And what does Romans 15:25 say?
At present, however, I am going to Jerusalem in a ministry to the saints.
And what does yours say, Kathy, at Acts 24:17?
After an absence of several years, I came to Jerusalem to bring my people gifts for the poor.
Okay. Okay. So the idea that undertaking a collection, and when you look at the times and the situation that he was living in, in the context of the Greek world, you did have this communal sense of caring for one another. Greeks weren't, you know, the secular world, if you will, back then, was, you know, they actually had this Greek word, eranoi. E-R-A-N-O-I. And those were associations that were formed among secular citizens, among citizens, normal citizens. And they kept a pot of money around so that if somebody fell on hard times, they'd be able to get kind of a know-it-just loan. Synagogues, you could imagine, I mean, all of us have read the Hebrew scriptures, and we know how big a role generosity and caring for one another play. We remember several texts that talk about taking care of the alien in your midst, to welcome and be hospitable to others. We wonder when we travel to the Middle East, and we're absolutely overwhelmed with the amount of hospitality. That's cross-cultural. It's Christian, it's Arab, it's part of the culture. This is the culture that was prevalent in synagogues as well. So Paul, I think, is very clear in saying that, wait a minute, you know, the Christian message cannot be far from that. And we have to be taking collections for the poor. We need to be caring for one another. Have you guys, you probably noticed in my preaching the last couple of weeks, I've kind of been looking into the historic place of African Americans in terms of how African Americans got here. Obviously slavery, the oppression, this kind of thing. And if you're like me, you're like, well, where's this happening now? Where's this happening today? And, you know, we can look at some of the, you know, when they had a famous bust in Florida, and they've had others, when you have some of these massage parlors, or legal massage parlors, or legal places of doing nails and that kind of thing. And they find every once in a while, some people are there not of their own volition. They don't know the language. They just have to do what they're told. We look at poultry and meatpacking. That's the most dangerous of all jobs. I want to say something like, every other day, there's somebody going to the hospital or losing a limb as a result of working there. And typically, these huge corporations will go and hire through a temp agency. And the temp agency is supposed to make sure it's not an illegal refugee or immigrant, and then have them work at these plants where, you know, at least in poultry, most of them aren't unionized. And so there aren't the protections or the pay, et cetera, that you would hope that the people who own them are making terrific amounts of money that would be shared among them. And so we still look at this idea of greed. We still look at this idea of where can we bring God's equity into the world? So I want to, as we look at Paul's, you know, recommendation, now concerning the collection for the saints, you should follow the directions I gave to the churches at Galatia. He's really reminding us that we need to care for our neighbors. I don't know if any of you have been reading much about people wearing masks. But one of the more common memes, Susan, you're on social media, is, you know, you know, it's sad that people are acting the way that they're acting. You know, it's simply about taking care of other people. You know, and I think the meme that I'm talking about has, you know, in a million different ways, a quote from Fauci, which is, "I don't know how to explain to you that you should care about people."
Right.
You know, "I don't know how to explain to you that you should care about other people." And this is really what Paul's getting at here. Paul is trying to remind us that we are to care for other people. I think it's really, really important that you and I try to mirror this. Now, concerning the collection for the saints, you should follow the directions. And the directions are simple, care about other people. And then he goes into a little bit of logistics. On the first day of every week, each of you is to put aside and save whatever extra you earn, so that collections need not be taken when I come. Okay? So that you'll have some money set aside, I can go distribute that. Now, you and I are under the impression, and I have not seen any place where it's ever been claimed that Paul was trying to pad his own bank account or get rich off of these collections. From what we know, Paul was a man of integrity and was really, you know, taking care to get the money where it needed to go. I think it's so important because of the mistrust culture has on churches being just places that are using religion to get people rich, that we are very upfront with, you know, here's how much we make. Here's where it goes. Our budget's always available for reviewing at the church office, you know. We don't put it up on the website. I suppose we could put a generalized version, but I don't know if people click on it. But the idea being that we need to be thinking about those who are hurting. And Paul, even though he'd been through a whole lot, and he goes into detail about that, he is not using that money for anything other than his travel expenses, is what the scripture seems to say. So on the first day of the week, when's the first day of the week? First day of the week, what is it, Sunday? Because the Sabbath is Saturday. So on a Sunday, you guys, go ahead, set aside some money so that when I come, we can take it where it needs to go. And when I arrive, I will send any whom you approve with letters to take your gift to Jerusalem. It seems advisable that I should go also. They will accompany me. So this idea that a collection for the poor is something that's important. Why is it important? Well, I think that whenever a church does this, whenever we take up a collection, it shows a certain amount of unity that we have when we can say, hey, St. David's is sending you this, and it's to Haiti, or it's to the South Oakland Shelter, or any of our passions, hunger, homelessness, or Haiti. And so there's this sense that we demonstrate the unity of the church. And I think unity is so important to be demonstrated in this day and age when we have such fragmentation. And then obviously, it's a visceral way to put into practice the practical teachings of the gospel. And the practical teachings is, you know, Fauci says, "I don't know how to explain it any other way." Take care of other people is one of the ways. And so when we go into this idea of giving, we're going to take a little bit of a look at how Paul uses this, you know, this word for collection. Because Paul will use a different word for collection almost every time he talks about it. And he uses, in this case, when he uses that word, "collection." And let me share with you the screen again. Let's see. On the first day of the week, each of you is to put aside whatever you extra earn so that collections need not be taken when I come. This word for collections, the Greek word is logia, L-O-G-I-E. And logia is, again, one of the nine words that he will use to describe this whenever he writes letters to the church. And this one is distinctive in that it means an extra piece of giving, right? Over and above what you might normally give. Certainly, you are, you know, you're asking the question in Matthew 5:47, what more are you doing than others? Well, what more are you doing? You're going to give a logia. You're going to give a little bit extra. I'd like, let's see, Pat, if you could go over to 1 Corinthians 16, verses 3, excuse me, verse 3. And Kitty, if you could go to 2 Corinthians 8:4. So, let's see. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Kitty, I just want you there. We're already at 1 Corinthians 16:3. Pat, we're already there. And so the word that you're going to read is simply going to be this gift. Because that's a second word that Paul's going to use to describe a collection. And Kitty, what word do you, what can you read, 2 Corinthians 8:4?
Okay. Thought you didn't want it. Begging us earnestly for the privilege of sharing in this ministry to the saints.
Okay. He's going to use a word, and you won't be surprised by it, especially you, Kitty, because you sing in the choir. But it's this word, charis, C-H-A-R-I-S, where we get ubi charitas, that we sing. And this is characteristically translated here as gift in terms of what's meant by a collection. So with the idea that a free gift is freely given, and that this is another way of expressing what it means for Paul to talk about the collection. It's not something extracted from somebody. It's something, it's not, it's something that results after a guilt-inducing stewardship, you know, pitch. But it is something, as we say, that is freely given. And then in Romans, Pat, if you want to go Romans 15:6, and Kitty, you're in 2 Corinthians, so go to 2 Corinthians 8, verse 4. Excuse me, no, no, I'm sorry. 2 Corinthians, yeah, 2 Corinthians 9, verse 13.
Nine.
9, verse 13. And then, sorry about that. And then you're at Romans 15:6. And what does, what do you have there, Pat?
So that together you may with one voice glorify the God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Okay, and Kitty, what do you have?
Through the testing of this ministry, you glorify God by your obedience to the confession of the gospel of Christ and by the generosity of your sharing with them and with all others.
Okay, this idea of sharing there is this word, koinonia, which you've heard, you've all heard before. It's a K, K-O-I-N-O-N-I-A. And it means fellowship. And the essence of fellowship is sharing, which is why we get that rendering there. Christian fellowship is based on that spirit of sharing. And the, I think the dominating question we ask when we talk about being in fellowship and in koinonia with one another is not what can I get, but what can I give? And I think as we go through life, and we try our best to position ourselves in that way, and we ask ourselves constantly, what can I give? What can I give? What can I give? It's interesting when people, when, you ever play that game with other people? What if you won the lottery? What would you do? And I think part of this, part of your answer depends on how old you are. Because as you get older, you, I do find, I think statistically, humans do get a little bit more altruistic. They come back to church. They think about their kids and providing for them. But I think that when people are asked that question in general, their knee-jerk is, oh, okay, I'll pay off my house. I will, you know, I have a friend of a friend who won 500, was it 500 million? It was a staggering amount of money, the lottery. And they pretty much stayed the same. They bought Lamborghinis, though. Lamborghini. And so the idea, though, is if we win the lottery, is the first thing we think about, how can I bless other people? And I try to think, gosh, if I could go over on, you ever go to like Kickstarter or Indiegogo? Very often, people who have a tragic medical issue, and then they can't pay their bills, will do a crowdfunding, you know, help me pay for my, you know, my cancer surgery, help me so-and-so. I like to think that if I won the lottery, I'd just go on that site every day and, you know, click.
No, that'd be fun.
Yeah, wouldn't that be fun? And I've thought about, gosh, you know, because I have that friend, Chris Kitty, that I've told you about too, who's worked for very, very wealthy people, and how much, you know, time and attention they put into watches, into dresses, into cars, and this kind of thing. And I don't mean to question their generosity, because I don't know those people. But wouldn't that be interesting to have a hobby? My hobby is, you know, going on to Kickstarter for somebody's, you know, cataract surgery. Yeah, and I'm sure rich people do that all the time. I'm not, I can't judge, I'm not in that crowd. But, you know, if I won the lottery, to get ourselves thinking, how could I bless people? You know, how could I really give of people? And then we figure out that we don't have to win the lottery to do that. We can take, Paul says, set a portion aside every week for the collection. Can we set aside something? And maybe we can't pay for the entire cataract surgery. But can we say, you know, we set aside this much money because we're going to go on to? And so instead of buying that, whatever that's going to be, to be able to go on and, you know, and to be generous. And so I think what we want to try to do as Christians is to challenge ourselves to be more generous, to challenge ourselves, to find ways to, you know, I hate to quote the phrase, but it's like, give till it hurts, you know? But to really, I mean, Jesus kind of takes to task the comfortable giver and says, "That woman who put the last mite in the collection basket gave more than you did." She said, "Well, wait a minute, I just gave 10 grand." Yeah, but you're not going to miss it, you know? What she gave, she's going to miss. You know, she doesn't know where tomorrow's bills are, tomorrow's bills. And so that brings up all kinds of questions. Because you and I also don't want to end up on our kids' doorsteps. You know, we want to have, you know, we want to make sure that we're not a burden to those around us and that we're so heavenly-minded that we're no earthly good. We want to do that, we want to do that balance. So it is difficult. But what Paul is trying to say, I think, here, is to think of others, is to be generous concerning the collection of the saints, right? And so koinonia is another word for that fellowship. And then, let's see, Kitty, you're in 2 Corinthians 9:13. What does verse 9:1 say?
Just a minute. 9:1. No, it is not necessary for me to write you about the ministry to the saints.
And that word there, that's used ministry there, is going to be a fourth word that Paul will use in referring to a collection. And that's that word that we all know, Susan knows. It's daikonia, which we get deacon from. And that has to do with practical, practical, practical collections. So something that would lend itself to something that is just practically needed. The fifth word he uses, and that's, let's see, 2 Corinthians 8:20. 2 Corinthians 8:20, yeah. We're keeping you there, Kitty.
Okay. We intend that no one should blame us about this generous gift that we are administering.
In that case, generous gift, it's rendered another Greek word, which is hadrotes, H-A-D-R-O-T-E-S, H-A-D-R-O-T-E-S. And that meaning is abundance, okay? Generous giving. And so Paul speaks of the, kind of the envoys of the church who accompany him to guarantee that he doesn't misuse the abundance that he's been, that he's giving to those who need it. I think that, I think that this, again, challenges us to think about how can we use our abundance for those who do not have it? And finding good ways to give is another challenge for us, I think. We want to give to trustworthy, you know, organizations and quote-unquote ministries that are going to really do the work that needs to be done. And I think that's one reason the Salvation Army is so successful, is because they have organized themselves so that it's pretty, I mean, you know, I don't know if you've ever seen that listing of CEOs of top charities, you know, the Red Cross, they make $600,000 a year. You know, they list them, and then they get Salvation Army, and that guy makes like $35,000 a year. You know, they're very, very transparent in terms of how they give. So the, let's see, 2 Corinthians 9:5. What does that say, Kitty?
So I thought it necessary to urge the brothers to go on ahead to you and arrange in advance for this bountiful gift that you have promised so that it may be ready as a voluntary gift and not as an extortion. Give or else.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So that word bounty, bountiful gift that you saw there is a Greek word. And that's the sixth one he uses, elogia, E-U, L-O-G-I-A. And that's a kind of giving which is, in which we are supremely glad to give. The, and he uses that word kind of more than once, but that's one we can look at. The seventh one, and I'm going to have you read 9:12, Kitty. You have read before.
9:12. For the rendering of this ministry not only supplies the needs of the saints, but also overflows with many thanksgivings to God.
And the idea with this word is the word where we get the word liturgy. Liturgy, I think, so L-E-U-T-U-R-G-I-A. There's this sense, you know, we get this word liturgy being the work of the people. And we kind of stole that from ancient understandings of like public works so that a work of the people would be a new sewer system, right? Something in which we talk about public works that has a strong That has a strong strain of public works to it. And so giving is going to be towards something as practical as a shared public need. And so that gets a different word that Paul uses in describing what he means by a collection. And so that's, the eighth word he uses is found in, in, and I think, who was, who read Acts 24:17?
Kathy.
I do.
Yeah, go ahead and read that again.
Okay. After an absence of several years, I came to Jerusalem to bring my people gifts for the poor and to present offerings.
Okay. Gifts, we talk about, offerings, we didn't. Pat, I wonder if you could turn to Ecclesiasticus? Not Ecclesiastes.
Wrong Bible.
Okay. We'll see if she can find that. That's a rather obscure book. And I want to say, I, I want to say that may be in the Apocrypha, Ecclesiasticus.
It is, and I don't have that Bible right here.
Okay, Kitty, do you have an Apocrypha with you?
I don't think so.
Okay, Kathy?
I do not.
Okay, then I will read it for you. The idea is that you read, when you said offerings, Kathy, that this, this word, this word's kind of harder to spell. It's E L E E. L E M O S U N E. Alemosune. And, and that is, I'm, I'm giving you the spellings of these that are, as we would say them, not, not, not as they appear in Greek. But the idea is that this is a word for alms, and alms giving is central to Jewish understanding of, of how one is to live a life devoted to God. Alms in Ecclesiasticus are referred to in this way. Alms given to a father shall not be blotted out, and it shall stand firm as a substitute for sin. In the day of trouble, it shall be remembered, obliterating, obliterating thine iniquities as the heat, the horror frost. So alms giving is kind of equated to righteousness here. When we see trouble that the church has gotten into in the past, when they say, be generous in your giving and it will be accounted to you as righteousness. We kind of can see how that may have gotten construed here, right? Of course, it had gotten very corrupt in the Middle Ages. It led to the great Protestant Reformation of the 1500s. Because people who, you know, simply wanted to get their brother in heaven or, or, or for any number of reasons, had corrupted this idea of alms giving and were basically paying for forgiveness, if you could do such a thing, paying for the church's blessings, when that's not what's intended here. The idea is that alms giving has to be tied to the heart. And you're giving out of generosity. You're not giving expecting your name on the side of the hospital. You're not giving in expectation that you will have some sort of benefit whatsoever. That's not alms giving. Alms giving is freely seeing a need and perhaps not even mentioning it to anybody. Because as, as Jesus would be quick to say, your giving in, in the dark shall one day be, be made known in the light. But when you give, don't let you, let your right hand know what your left hand is doing. In other words, when you do it that way, you are giving to get. And Jesus says, no, 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 you need to give to give. And that selfless kind of giving is what God is about. And that's how we emulate God's, God's, is how we emulate God, is by giving alms. So that's, that's kind of what's mentioned there. The last word he uses, and you already read it in, in 17, excuse me, chapter 24, verse 17 of the book of Acts. And because there are several different words used in here. So these are more kind of, the, I, I'm pointing out to you words that, that describe the aura around the, the different shades of collection when Paul refers to the money being, being given to the church. And this, this word here is, is a prosphora, which is P R O S P H O R A. And it is the word for an offering and a sacrifice. In the most real sense that which is given to a person in need is a sacrifice to God. We, when we help other people, we are helping God. And so I think to put a spin on what Anthony Fauci would say, in loving your neighbor, you are showing your worship. This is wearing a mask, being careful about where you're going, and knowing that you have the potential to help and to hurt is a responsibility that, excuse me, I don't know if, I know that not enough people have been taken seriously, that we have this ability to harm and to heal. Let's just make the good decision. So anyway, we're, we're going back, I'm going to go back to share the screen because we did not take a look at the, at, at the version here in, in the message. And so let's see, Pat, why don't you read 1 to 4 in the message here?
Regarding the relief offering for poor Christians that is being collected, you get the same instructions I gave the churches in Galatia. Every Sunday, each of you make an offering and put it in safekeeping. Be as generous as you can. When I get there, you'll have it ready, and I won't have to make a special appeal. Then after I arrive, I'll write letters authorizing whomever you delegate and send them off to Jerusalem to deliver your gift. If you think it best that I go along, I'll be glad to travel with them.
Really is a way of making this easier to understand, doesn't it?
It's like our loose change Sunday.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, we've, we've gone over these. I don't want to belabor the point. But what he does bring out here is it is a relief offering for poor Christians is his understanding of what this collection is about. And, you know, I, I don't disagree. I don't have the, the background to do that. But what he's trying to offer them is an opportunity to be generous, an opportunity to get outside of themselves, an opportunity to, to emulate God's nature by being generous, right? I don't know about you, but one of the, one of the things that always puts a smile on my face is, is a memory of, of, of me being generous. I wish I had more memories of that. But the idea is that those kind of thoughts should dominate the Christian's conscience is times in which we, we have been generous. So, so that's, that's his understanding. Next, we go to plans for travel. And Kitty, would you read verses 5 through 9?
I will visit you after passing through Macedonia, or I intend to pass through Macedonia. And perhaps I will stay with you or even spend the winter, so that you may send me on my, my way wherever I go. I do not want to see you now just in passing, for I hope to spend some time with you if the Lord permits. But I will stay in Ephesus until Pentecost, for a wide door for effective work has opened to me, and there are many adversaries.
Anything stick out to people there?
His opportunity, and yet he knows that there are going to be those who want to block his travel, want to block his teaching. Many adversaries. Wants to spend time with them. He doesn't want to just wave at them and say, oh, it's nice seeing you and keep going.
Yep. So to break this down a little bit, one of the things that I think we can find here is that he has, he has a pastor's heart, okay? He, he is not going to leave the sheep alone. He is going to remind the sheep that he's available, that he's going to come, you know, and, and, and spend more time with them. It seems that he really has a love for this church. When we read Philippians, we really got the sense that he really loved that church. Perhaps he vocalized it more to them in a different letter than the one we have here. But he really seems to have this, 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 this kind of link, like this is his child, you know? I'm going to come visit you, you know? That, that this is his life's vocation. And then gives them some practical, you know, warnings. Maybe I'll stay the winter. So that you may send me on my way wherever I go. So I mean, he's feeling a link here. This really does talk, it kind of edge on this idea of, of being family, that Paul really sees the church as, as a second and if not a first family. Verse 7, I do not want to see, I, I do not want to see you now just in passing, for I hope to spend some time with you if the Lord permits. Not only do, does this build on the previous two sentences of him having a love and a desire to spend time with them, but he also does something that I think we can, we do well to learn from Paul. And that is, you know, the, 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 in the Arabic, Arab culture, there's this saying, Inshallah, which is in, in Allah's time, in God's time, Inshallah, if the Lord permits, is, is, can, can, can be a connotation too. And many, many sentences, especially when they talk about plans. I'll see you tonight, Inshallah, you know? I'll see you. And, and so it, it, it has a connotation of in God's time because Inshallah often means, like, you know how sometimes, Kitty, we put on the, the, like, what time will you be there? And you'll say six-ish? And Inshallah is kind of like that. I'll see you tonight at 6, Inshallah. Oh, okay, so it's going to be around 6, right? But it also has this kind of connotation of in God's time. If the Lord permits is how Paul puts it. And this is something that I think we, he, he does well to remind us that every single day, every single moment that we have is from God, and we move under this great umbrella of God's care. But I will stay in Ephesus until Pentecost. Here's some more practical, this is where I'll be. And why will I be there? Because a wide door for effective work has opened to me. And whenever you do an effective work, what's going to show up? Pat, you pointed it out.
Series.
Many adversaries are going to point out. I don't care what your work is. You know, John Lewis died, as we know, this past week. All of the many adversaries he had. To do the work that he was called, excuse me, to do the work that he was called to do. And I think that when, the problem is many of us want to avoid adversaries. I do, I want to avoid adversity. But to do the Christian work requires that we find a way through the adversity and we find a way around the adversaries. And around the adversaries in Christian ways. I mean, Jesus said, love your enemies, right? Do good to those who, who don't do good to you. So we kind of don't have a choice here. If we want to follow Jesus, we've got to find a way to treat our adversaries well. And let's see, let's, let's take a look here. And Kitty, why don't you read this one too?
I plan to visit you after passing through northern Greece. I won't be staying long there, but maybe I can stay a while with you, maybe even spend the winter. Then you could give me a good send off wherever I may be headed next. I don't want to just drop in between other primary destinations. I want a good, long, leisurely visit. If the master agrees, we'll have it. For the present, I'm staying right here in Ephesus. A huge door of opportunity for good work has opened up here. There is also mushrooming opposition.
Many adversaries is turned into mushrooming opposition, right? Again, quite a, quite a spin by Peterson here. And emphasizing what, what you'd said earlier, Pat, is I, I want a long, leisurely visit. Guy who's really, it's like, I mean, Kitty, I can imagine you saying that to one of your daughters, you know, when she coming to town. I want a long, leisurely visit. And so if God agrees, Inshallah, then we'll have it. But anyway, he ends this, this portion with this huge door of opportunity for good work has opened up, and there's opposition. Maybe he was talking, you know, about something specific in terms of the, the adversaries that maybe they knew. Maybe he was being purposely vague, we're not sure. There, there is speculation on what he was talking about. Kathy, you're up next. Why don't you retake us from 10 through 12 here?
If Timothy comes, see that he has nothing to fear among you, for he is doing the work of the Lord just as I am. Therefore, let no one despise him. Stunt him on his way in peace, so that he may come to me. I am expecting him with the brothers, not concerning our brother Apollos. I strongly urge him to visit you with the other brothers, but he was not at all willing to come now. He will come when he has the opportunity.
So Paul's beginning to wrap up his letter, and he's doing, he's, again, this is, this is the practical part. He's calling out a couple people. What do we know about Timothy?
Like the son.
He's like a son to Paul. He's, he's, he's such a good son that he even writes letters like Paul, right? And so we have two of them in the Bible, first and second Timothy, right? The letters to Timothy from Paul. And we know that Timothy was a very faithful companion on Paul's missionary journeys. And, and then of course, there's Apollos as well, who's mentioned several times in scripture as a willing and able companion to St. Paul. So verse 10, if Timothy comes, see that he has nothing to fear among you, he's doing the work of the Lord just as I am, makes you wonder, would he have had fear among you? Therefore, let no one despise him. Send him on his way in peace, so that he may come for me, for I'm expecting him with the brothers. So again, practical, I'm expecting somebody and make sure that you welcome him. He's obviously got nothing to fear. And he, he should be, there's no reason he should be scared of you, but you should welcome him with open arms. What does that tell us about welcoming people? Especially people of the household of faith, that we are to do that and we're to be as hospitable as we can with others. It's an interesting question because, you know, you and I don't live in a day and age. I mean, you know, Kitty, remember when, when we were kids and you'd, you, you, you could just like go over to the next door neighbor's house and like walk in? Or, you know, there was just this sense of community. Whereas these days, you have to arrange, the parents have to arrange a playdate, right?
True.
Yeah, it's, it's so different now. And so when we read about St. Paul talking about Timothy here and the hospitality that is going to, the church is expecting with them, I think of ways in which we are to be hospitable. And I think we do that with opening the doors up for the shelter when we are able to do that. The church really does open up its doors, and that's something we need to be about. Paul then mentions this other character that you and I have heard before, Apollos. And he's not just a, a, a Greek god here. He is our brother. And this was one of the, you know, that word brother. Remember the early criticisms of, of the church? The early, the early criticisms were, you guys are, are atheists because we can't see your God. You know, you don't have a God. You worship a God that's not here, therefore it's not a God. And so you, you, you don't have a God. They would also make fun of Christians and call them incestuous. And they called them that because they were constantly referring to one another's brother and sister. Brother and sister, brother and sister, brother and sister in Christ. And you marry your brothers and sisters. It's just, they just kind of didn't get that idea that, you know, we, we, we are using that term as Paul does here, as a term of endearment. And when we see, as we move down here, some of his advice, we can see that he is looking for these churches to be as close as family. This, this becomes really difficult for us because back then, how did, how big did we say the church was, you guys? Was, you know?
Twenty or so.
Yeah, 20 people. Is 20 people, I mean, it may be the Brady Bunch. I mean, it may be a big family, but it's a family, right? And you could eat together, and you could know one another, and you could Bible study together, and you were kind of this family unit. That's not so in our congregations. Because our congregations, you know, we just don't, we, we have different zip codes. We're, you know, we see each other for lucky once or twice a month. And, and we don't have the same And, uh, and we don't have the same kind of rapport that, uh, allows us to really, you know, I, I don't want to say freely, but more authentically, uh, own that term brother, right? Now concerning our brother Apollos, um, I strongly urge him to visit you, uh, with the other brothers. And, uh, uh, he, but he was not at all willing to come now. He will come when he has an opportunity. So I, I, I think that we pick up something here about the nature of, uh, the early Christian community. And, you know, quite frankly, what we're to be about, um, as Christians today in terms of how tight we are with others. I think we try to do that, Kitty, with our small groups and others have been in it, that we want to create this sense of, you know, I, I, I had to do a double take when Starbucks came out with their slogan saying, we want to be your third place. There's home, there's work, and then there's a coffee shop. Because the church has been vying for that third place title for a very long time. And in Paul's letters, he's going to really argue that that is not a third place in line, but that's, that's a first place in line. That your Christian community, um, one of the early church fathers famously wrote, how can you have God as your father if the church isn't your mother? You need to be that close to your brothers and sisters in Christ, um, that the church would be your mother. So, okay, great. And then, um, let's see, are we down to you, Susan? I am going to ask you to read 13 through 18, and you guys will like these. This is a nice practical part of it.
Keep alert, stand firm in your faith, be courageous, be strong. Let all that you do be done in love. Now, brothers and sisters, you know that members of the household of Stephanus were the first converts in Akia. And they have devoted themselves to the service of the saints. I urge you to put yourselves at the service of such people and everyone who works and toils with them. I rejoice at the coming of Stephanus and Fortunus and Akias because they have made up for your absence. For they refreshed my spirit as well as yours. So give recognition to such persons.
Okay, um, hidden between all these practical bits of advice is this wonderful charge. Keep alert, stand firm, be courageous, be strong. And let all that you do be done in love. What a wonderful verse that is, the verse, uh, 1 Corinthians 16, 13. What do you think he means here by keeping alert? What's, what's that? What's the concept? Pat, when you hear keep alert, what do you, what do you, what do you mean?
Well, I think of Peters. Be watchful because there are serpents seeking you. Or the lion is roaming around seeking, maybe, maybe destroy. And when it says keep alert, there are those who want to stand in the way of becoming strong in the faith.
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely.
But I think the last part is what you do. Do it because you want to glorify God and show him as the one who is really the one who takes care of all of us.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, keep alert, I think, um, is, you know, we, we, it's, it's about awareness, isn't it? I mean, when Kathy, when somebody says, hey, keep alert, keep alert. It, it, you get the sense of watchful, uh, at the, at the, you know, at the three foot level. But keeping alert to me also regards, also comes to us from the 40,000 foot level. Keeping alert means being aware of what's going on, right? It's a reason that you subscribe to the newspaper, right? It's a reason that you don't just get caught up in your own little bubble and don't know what else is going on. You know, it's, this, this idea is that we have to know what's going on in the world. And, um, Paul will say, and our people's window will remind us, uh, Mark, Mark's version of going out, go out there for, into the world. Know what's going on. I mean, I, I love, um, our congregation in so many ways, but the ways that people have really picked up being digital. You know, cookie, kicking and screaming, many of us, but we have had to be alert and be watchful of where the times are taking us. And, and this is, you know, something we can't, um, we, we can't emphasize enough as part of our Christian duty is to stay alert in this way. So, uh, when we keep alert, uh, we, we don't just like wake up every day saying, okay, you know, the Lord's coming. What we, what we want to keep alert about is we, excuse me, we belong to Christ. Christ is not leaving us. Um, very often, uh, you know, I, I always like to share that sign, uh, that I saw in, in my, one of my wife's therapy rooms. You know, you don't have to, uh, feel like a good mom to be a good mom, right? You don't, and I, 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 I want to just bolt that into our church interiors. So you don't have to feel like a good Christian to be a good Christian. Okay? So often we equate our feelings with the reality. And the truth is, we have an extremely devoted congregation of people who have really made some significant decisions in their lives with the way that they conduct them to follow Jesus. And yet you have so many people saying, well, I don't feel like, whatever I call somebody a saint, they're like, not me, you know? Like, yeah, why? Because I don't feel like a saint. Well, you don't have to feel like a saint to be a saint, right? You don't have to, 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 to feel that way. And so part of keeping alert means knowing that you are God's, you are God's chosen, you are God's called. You are the one who's supposed to be there. God has made it so. And, uh, and I think that's part of what Paul says when he says be alert. This is who you are. Don't act like you're somebody else. You know, you have a responsibility for other people because of who you are. So, um, stand firm in your faith is another thing that he's going to say, uh, that I think has to do with being alert. You know, when, once you know who you are and can own that, uh, you then stand in that. So you're keeping alert, you're standing, being, what do you think he means by being courageous here? Being courageous. Is some, some of yous, uh, the words, uh, that, that's those and similar words to describe John Lewis. And John Lewis, uh, was incredibly courageous in the way that he, um, put his faith into action. And, and many times, uh, not knowing if he was going to live through to see the end of the week. Because of the stands that he was taking, uh, the moral stands. But courageous and then be strong, be strong, be strong, be strong. Don't wither, uh, in, in, in your pursuits. Uh, don't, um, don't, don't back down. And so, so these, you know, being alert, standing firm, being courageous, being strong, uh, are, are, are ways. I mean, Paul's face is a cheerleader, you know, he's saying, you can do it, keep it up, stay awake. I mean, how many of these, uh, concepts do you hear, you know, the cheerleaders using at a football game, right? You know, and, and, and coaches shouting in there, you know, get, get on the balls of your feet, stay awake, stay awake. What are you looking for, you know? And keeping alert, um, I don't know about you, but, um, I, I spent a few years playing baseball. When I was very young, because I was terrible at it. And, and, and the biggest temptation when you played right field, uh, which it seemed nobody ever hit the ball to you. Is that you have to be for two and a half hours, alert. Which is very difficult to do because you're probably only going to get three balls during the entire two hour game, right? And, and, and yet, yet you have to act as if each pitch is going to come right to you. And, you know, statistically, it's going to be one in a hundred, you know? And you don't know which one that is. So that's, that is baked into what Paul's saying here, is you don't know when that one pitch comes. But when that one pitch comes, you don't want to be sitting down counting daisies. You know, you want to be up there ready to go. And so, so this is Paul's idea, I think, is, is to stay alert. And it's tough to do, and that has to do with standing firm, being courageous and being strong. You gotta be strong to be alert. Uh, because it's not even be alert, it's keep alert. And it's this constant sense of, um, you know, low grade awareness of your surroundings. That, that, uh, that we're happy to, you know, to, to turn on in certain situations. Paul says, now I want you to turn that on in, in, in more situations, you need to be alert. So then Paul begins after this wonderful, wonderful verses 13 to 14. A bit of encouragement that he gives to the saints, he goes into these very practical, uh, greetings in which he's going to end his letter with. It's almost like he's running the credits, right? Uh, remember when they used to run the credits in movies at the beginning? You know, it used to take like five minutes to get to the show. And then they figured they were losing too many people. And so now they put them in back. And if you watch TV, sometimes they put them in a tight little box while the next show starts so that they could technically say, we ran the credits. Even though nobody could read it, but they went so fast. But Paul is going to, uh, use that same strategy here in, uh, in, in putting this at the, on the very last chapter, at the very end of his, of his letter. Now, brothers and sisters, you would know, uh, you know that the members of the household of Stephanus were first converts in nearby Akia, uh, and they devoted themselves to serve the saints. So he, he obviously has something, uh, in, in common with the readers of this letter, uh, in terms of their common friend. So he's referring to somebody who they know. And, uh, and he, he notes of this person that they devoted themselves to the servants of the saints. Wouldn't that be a great moniker on your tombstone? Pat Tilly devoted herself to the service of the saints, right? This is, this is what we, we all would hope would be somewhere on our, on our tombstone. And so, uh, we know that Stephanus, uh, in his household, uh, were the first converts in that region. And they devoted themselves to service. It, it, I always loved reading that when somebody not only devotes themselves to Christ, themselves to Christ, but they keep doing it. They, the work continues. I think many of us have been around people who have devoted their, their life to Christ at one point in their life, but then have gone on and, and, and no longer, you know, mind that, uh, as, as they used to. But he's thanking them for their continued service. Verse 16. Um, I urge you yourselves to put yourselves, excuse me, I urge you to put yourselves at the service of such people and everyone who works and toils with them. I rejoice at the coming of Stephanus and Fortunitas and Akaiakas. I'm guessing that, uh, Akaiakas must have been from Akia, right? Right? Uh, because they have made for, uh, made up for our absence, for they refreshed my spirit as well as yours. So give recognition to such persons. And, uh, let's see, and then I, let's see, let's, let's, um, let's read Peterson's here, 13 through 18. Okay. And then Susan, I think you read.
I did.
Yep. This is what you want to read here. You want to go ahead and, and read these?
About our friend Apollos, I have done my best to get him to pay you a visit. But haven't talked him into it yet. He doesn't think this is the right time, but there will be a right time. Keep your eyes open, hold tight to your convictions, give it all you've got. Be resolute and love without stopping. Would you do me a favor, friends, and give special recognition to the family of Stephanus? You know, they were among the first converts in Greece. And they've put themselves out serving Christians ever since then. I want you to honor and to look up to people like that. Companions and workers who show us how to do it, giving us something to aspire to. I want you to know how delighted I am to have Stephanus, Fortunitas and Akias here with me. They partially, particularly, partially, wake up for your absence. They've refreshed me by keeping me in touch with you. Be proud that you have people like this among you.
One of the things I think is really important to, uh, to, to pick out of this is the utter devotion that they have to one another. And the real, real gift that I, I think unfortunately has been lost in the modern church, simply because our churches are so big. I, I, I think that the warmth and care that Paul has for his, uh, friends here is something that we really, uh, would, would do well to recapture. Maybe that's what church will look like once we get out of this. You know, I, I love meeting with you guys regularly. I think this is just a certain super time of fellowship. And I, um, I, I know that if I had any need, um, I could call each one of you up and you would show up in a heartbeat. And I think that goes around for all of us here, that we would all do that for one another. Because we do have a mutual love for one another. And, um, I think that, uh, that because of just the size, uh, this has turned into something that's, that's gotten very difficult, um, for us to do. So then that takes us down to, um, let's see. Really to, to, to the last, uh, last bit here. And, um, I'm going to share my screen here. As we wrap this up. And, uh, Pat, is it your turn to read again?
Could be. I don't remember.
We don't keep track.
The churches of Asia send greetings. Aquila and Priscilla, Pris, Prisa, together with the church in their house, greet you warmly in the Lord. All the brothers and sisters send greetings. Greet one another with a holy kiss. I, Paul, write this greeting with my own hand. Let anyone be accursed who has no love for the Lord. Our Lord, come. The grace of the Lord Jesus be with you. My love be with all of you in Christ Jesus.
Any thoughts that people want to share in that?
It's interesting. He says greet one another with a holy kiss. And, you know, it, it, today, some do. But it's almost like, oh, no, you know, that's, that's not the thing to do. And then anyone be accursed. We aren't that bold today who has no love for the Lord. We aren't bold enough today to say accursed.
Axe on your house.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and see how Peterson reads this. Why don't you go ahead and read this bit from, from him?
The churches here in Western Asia send greetings. Aquila and Priscilla and the church that meets in their house say hello. All friends here, say hello. Pass the greetings around with holy embraces. And I, Paul, in my own handwriting, send you my regards. If anyone won't love the master, throw them out. Make room for the master. Our master Jesus has his arms wide open for you. And I love all of you in the Messiah in Jesus. That's pretty bold too. Throw them out.
It's like 10 o'clock service.
I wonder how you judge if they love the master or not. You know, is it, is it going to be like a therm, one of those thermometers on your forehead? Oh, that one doesn't love the Lord, so.
Wouldn't it have been easier then to tell who was sincere about loving the Lord than it is today?
Well, I, you know, again, I, I, I think of Queen Elizabeth's quote, we shall not build windows into men's souls. You know, if somebody says they're Christian, um, I'm not going to say, okay, what date? Show me when you were baptized. I want to see. Even, even though their deeds may be very different than what I would have expected a believer in Jesus to be practicing. I don't know if I have that luxury of being able to judge them. And I, and then that's where, um, you know, I'd want to dig a little bit deeper into the shades of meaning here. Um, I want to get back though to, um, to one of your questions, Will. And we'll get to it in chronological order here as we first look at Aquila and, and Priska, or Priscilla, as you said. And, uh, Pat, why don't you go to Acts 18, 2? Kitty, go to Romans 16, 3. Okay. Um, because Aquila and Priscilla, um, are interesting characters that we hear of in Paul's letters. And when we hear about them, they're like in different places. Uh, and, and, and I want us to take a look at the witness that we have in the scripture. So let's go ahead with Acts, chapter 18, 2.
There he found a Jew named Aquila, a native of Pontus. There he found a Jew named Aquila, a native of Pontus, who had recently come from Italy with his wife Prisua, because Claudius had ordered all Jews to leave Rome.
Okay. And Romans sixteen three?
Greet Priska and Aquila, who work with me in Christ Jesus.
So we're getting an idea that, um, these folks make their way to Ephesus, to Corinth, to Rome. And, and, and that, that they, uh, they seem to be, many people think that they also worked with Paul in his profession. So that, um, they were able to help him, uh, with the ministry. Uh, and, and that's simply, you know, tell, send the churches our greetings. Aquila and Pris, Priscilla or Priska, um, are, are sending their greetings. They know them, right? They're known in Corinth, they're known in Ephesus, they're known in Rome. It shows you a little bit about the ease of travel, you know, that they kind of get it, get up and go, and, uh, and that they had a business that allowed them to do that. Um, perhaps tent-making, as I say, along with Paul. And, and so I, I think they're, they're to be, um, commended as one of these kind of little-known, um, little-known saints here. The, um, Aquila and, and Priska, um, Romans sixteen three to five, you just read three, keep going to verses four and five, you would, yeah.
Okay, that says greet Priska and Aquila, who work with me in Christ Jesus, and who risk their necks for my life, to whom not only I give thanks, but also all the churches of the Gentiles. Greet also the church in their house. Greet my beloved Epinetus, who was the first convert in Asia for Christ. Greet Mary, who has worked very hard among you.
Yeah, you're fine. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, what does he say about them? He says, well, they have the church in their house. Oh, okay. So, you know, this, this is, this is a house church, and so this is gonna be your half dozen or dozen people. Um, and that's who Paul is calling the church, right? Church is clearly not a building. For the first couple centuries, the church met in people's homes. That's how big or slash small they were to meet in somebody's home. And so these were folk that not only accompanied him on their ministry, but also opened their homes, uh, opened their home to, for hospitality and for worship as well. So, you know, they're, they're the, um, the Grams, the Brooks, the Sackets, the Kennings, the Tillys of their household, uh, of, of their churches. They are willing to open it up to, um, to bring people in. And so that ministry, I think, is important for us to, uh, to acknowledge and think of the ramifications for us today. Pat, you pointed out, uh, brothers and sisters send greetings, greet one another with a holy kiss. Pat, who do you kiss in your household?
Well, my husband, my daughter, sometimes the puppy.
Kitty, who do you kiss in your house?
My husband.
Yep, and then your kids?
Well, yeah, they're here.
Yep.
And if they're not sitting, you know, six feet apart, which we did.
Right, right. And so in that case, you being a woman, you have two daughters, you would be a girl kissing a girl.
Yes.
Yep, and, uh, and I kiss my son, and I kiss my daughter, and, uh, and, and I, I would kiss, I kiss my dad. Because that is the depth of our relationship. There is a closeness here that, uh, just like today, you ain't gonna be kissing, you know, people that you don't know. I mean, you know, that famous World War Two liberation photo of the marine or the sailor.
Killer and the nurse.
Some stranger, uh, is, is not what we're getting at here. You know, this is, uh, this is connoting a closeness with one another. That churches, as I say, churches unfortunately have lost this, uh, and we've, we, we've lost it for a couple reasons. One is, is, uh, is certainly, uh, uh, the liability of abuse. We don't, you know, as Kitty knows, being director of the church school, we have windows in all of our church school doors. We are not going to, uh, really commend that everybody kissed one another. Uh, there, there is a potential for, uh, misunderstanding and, or, uh, misinterpretation by heathen slanderers. But the church also has become less and less of a fellowship. Um, unfortunately, uh, the church is, is, we don't rely on one another as much as they did back then. Why? They were a, uh, they were a persecuted minority, right? They were a persecuted minority. And so when you have a persecuted minority, you are going to breed a certain amount of collegiality and brotherly affection. I, I, I remember living in England, which, you know, uh, you would think, uh, you know, we, we share, uh, we don't share the same language, we share a similar language. But, you know, home is where you get the jokes. And so when you live in England, you're, you're clearly not home. Everything is so different. But when I would run into an American, right? When I would be around a handful of Americans, there was a, you know, um, we weren't persecuted, but there was a, the sense that we held something very significant in common. And that's what's going on here, is, um, uh, these folks are close to each other. They're close enough to be able to kiss one another. And, uh, would the church ever, you know, get back to that where it was, it was, it, it was not only assumed that they had good intentions, you know, it was commended, uh, that you go and do this because of course you wouldn't be doing this for, um, any other reason other than to make sure you expressed your affection. And so for you and me, how well do we express our affection towards our brothers and sisters in Christ? You know, how good are we at really showing them and telling them, I love you? And not in a creepy way, um, but in a really, really sincere and caring way. Because I think if God showed up in our midst, one of the things God would say is, I really, really love you. And God would mean that, and God would, uh, would, uh, would embrace us in ways that are, um, are very authentic. So I, I think when it says greet one another with a holy kiss, we have to realize that, you know, we can't really do that anymore. That's, that's not gonna be something that's gonna, that's gonna work real well in our fellowships, uh, for obvious reasons. I, I, I think we would, you know, if, if we were able to be a church of small groups where we could meet with one another and, uh, really get to know and rely on one another. But those days of persecuted minority are kind of over because of the way that we fashion ourselves as a society. And then I want to get, before we leave here, um, get to this phrase. In verse twenty-two, let anyone be accursed who has no love for our Lord. And, uh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to click on that. Okay. Here again, is, uh, this, this idea. Our Lord, come. Does anybody know what kind of word, uh, Christians would use to express that? And as soon as I say it, you'll say, of course, and, and that's that word, maranatha, right? Maranatha, oh, Lord, come. What's odd about this is maranatha is a, is an Aramaic phrase, and this is letters written in Greek. So it, it'd be like all of a sudden, why do you have that French word in the middle of this English essay? Well, it's because everybody knew what it meant. You know, you, you, you just say maranatha, and people knew that. And I bet in some translations, it probably says maranatha, um, oh, Lord, come. Uh, this was a watchword, a password, a phrase that was obviously so common, um, between these parties that they could use it, even though it wasn't either of their native languages. Maranatha, oh, Lord, come. And, uh, and, and I, I think that's important that, you know, we, you know, we do have special code words in, in the Christian, um, culture. Uh, and this, this would be one, oh, Lord, come. And so he's, he's tightening the bond of their mutual love for one another. And before verse twenty-three and twenty-four, he, he uses this frequently in his goodbyes. The grace of our Lord Jesus be with you. And Paul's last word is love. My love be with all of you in Christ. No matter what he said throughout this letter about calling them to task on the goofy stuff they've been doing, he wants to end this letter with love. Um, it's the beginning and, and of, of everything that we do as Christians. And he gets to that obviously in chapter thirteen, the famous love, love chapter. But as, as he ends this time together, I think it's important that we end our time together, uh, on that note of love, that it is with brotherly and sisterly affection that we, uh, study these scriptures, and it's with love for, um, for our God. And the way that that's expressed is by loving one another. And, uh, you guys are not hard to love, so.
Amen.
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 True.
Well, good. Well, out of that love, uh, we'll, uh, let's see, it's, it's July twenty-first, and so we'll take a couple of weeks off before we go into, uh, second Corinthians, and I hope you can join us for that. We'll begin on, uh, the, 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 the first Tuesday after, uh, Labor Day. So, um, so yes, that's September.
Big plans for Labor Day.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.